Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council
Recording in progress.
For Monday, March 21st, 2022. Moving to our agenda, I would ask that everyone please rise for a brief invocation and be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Well, as we meet tonight, Batavia is in a shadow of sadness. As is evidenced when we pull into the parking lot tonight, the WGN-TV truck is out in the parking lot doing a story with the Batavia Police Department. They fouled WBPM in here earlier this afternoon over the same incident in which we had a very tragic double fatal accident on Kirk Road this afternoon in which two people died. This always brings a great degree of sadness to our public safety staff. And following those two, that accident, we had two more, one out at McKee Street and Randall Road, and we also had one on Fabian Parkway at Suri, in which some more injuries were reported. Nobody unfortunately was killed, but it was a rough day for the Batavia Public Safety people. And it makes me much aware, as I'm sure it does all the members of the council, as to the outstanding staff of public safety servants that we have serving the community of Batavia. They've had a very, very rough day. And I would just ask anybody of the mind that would care to throw a prayer of kindness and appreciation to them tonight, it would, I'm sure, help get through what has been a very, very rough day. Tonight, as the city council meets, we ask for direction and understanding and appreciation and support of each other in the ideas that come before us. We ask for a spirited debate and a sound mind of decision-making, knowing that Batavia and each member of the city council who is here to vote on these items is here to do what they feel is in the right world for Batavia, for the future, and for our community as a whole. Tonight is also, we always want to remember those from our community who are serving on foreign soils in defense of the liberties of the United States of America. And we just ask that that brutal moment and this brutal time worldwide, that again, a special blessing be showered upon each and every one of those men and women from our community and from our country who are out providing the vital missions of freedom and protection for us all in the days ahead. We ask again for direction and appreciation viewpoints by the city council. And we ask that as we go about our meeting tonight, we do the right things for the right reasons in serving the good people of Batavia. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Paul Connolly, you want to lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes. Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving to item number three, which is a roll call. City, Kirk, please.
Miller.
Here.
Rizzato.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Connolly.
Here.
Chantet. Wolf.
Here.
Sulfah.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malley.
Here.
Uer.
Here.
Saron.
Here.
Vocal singer.
Here.
So we have thirteen of fourteen. So let the record reflect that we have thirteen of the fourteen elected members of the city council present and accounted for this evening's meeting, so we have the necessary quorum to conduct business. Item number four is our agenda reminder to myself to ask anyone who's going to address the city council tonight to please use one of the microphones that's either at the podium or on the desk before the council. It's important that we do this because, as you know, these, all meetings are being filmed by Batavia Access TV and will be replayed a number of times in the preceding days throughout the community. So we need to be able to make it so people can hear what the dialogue was at the meeting. All right, moving then to item number six, which is presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Alderman Chantet is...
Absent.
He's the one that's absent. Who's Alderman Beck? Would you present that, please?
Your Honor, the consent agenda reads as follows: to accept and place on file the building reports from February 2022, and for approval, the April 1st, 2022 payroll in the amount of $935,811.61. The accounts payable check register in the amount of $4,029,567.07. The city council minutes for March 7th, 2022. The 2021 budget transfer and reconciliation list. Resolution 22-34-R, approval of the 2022 zoning map. Ordinance 22-14, terminating the special service area number 61 for One Washington Place redevelopment. Amendment to Resolution 21-86-R, downtown improvement grant for Ware Equity Partners at 15 East Wilson. And resolution 22-36-R, approval for design engineering services with RJN Group for improvements to Randall Road Lift Station. Your Honor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Beck, second by Alderman Wolf for the approval of the consent agenda as presented and read. Any discussion? Questions? Chair, hurry down. The court called a roll.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Chantet. Absent. Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Saron.
Aye.
Vocal singer. Vocal singers?
Aye, aye, sorry.
Thank you. Miller.
Aye.
Rizzato.
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion's approved. Thirteen yes, no, no, and one absent. All right, moving to item number seven on our agenda, which are matters from the public for items that are not on our agenda. Do we have anybody this evening that wants to speak to us about something not on the agenda? All right, we have nobody at the moment. Moving to item number eight, which is approval of Class D1 restaurant all liquor license application for El Taco Grande Restaurant at 6 North River Street in Batavia. Who's got this one? Alderman Beck?
No, I'm going to sit down.
Oh, you're going to abstain, okay.
Yeah, I do, Your Honor.
Okay, Alderman Rizzato.
Yes, this item was discussed at the 315 Cow and moved to city council with a unanimous recommendation. Is anyone here from El Taco Grande?
I don't believe so.
Not online either?
No.
Okay. And if that's the case, I would make a motion to approve liquor license application for Vieja Inc., DBA El Taco Grande Restaurant at 6 North River Street in Batavia.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Rizzato, second by Alderman Saron for the approval of the Class D1 license for El Taco Grande Restaurant at 6 North River Street. Any further discussion? Court called a roll, please.
Rizzato.
Aye.
Beck.
Connolly.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Saron.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, two absent.
Okay.
Twelve yes.
Twelve yes, one absent and one abstention, right?
Twelve yes, no, no, two absent.
Okay, very good. Motion's approved. Okay, and item number nine then is a presentation from Preservation Partners of the Fox Valley. Laura, are you making some comments or something? Or are you just...
No, I'm just getting the presentation running.
Oh, okay.
We have to get used to staff running around now because they're not sitting next to the microphone.
So you're Hal Watts?
Al Watts.
Al, how?
She got an extra H in there.
Yeah, whatever.
One too many letters.
Sorry.
I've been called worse, trust me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, for giving me the opportunity to talk to you. I'm Al Watts. I'm the new Community Engagement Director for Preservation Partners of the Fox Valley. Tonight, I want to just tell you a little bit about me, because I'm new, outline how our nonprofit organization's been serving Fox Valley for 48 years, how investing in historic preservation generates economic growth for the city of Batavia, and how we can be a resource for you. So myself, I live in South Elgin with my wife and four kids. Three of them go to St. Charles schools, and then my oldest goes to the University of Iowa. Before I was hired in August of 2021, I was a stay-at-home dad for 19 years. Part of that time, I served as president of the National At-Home Dad Network, educating about the importance of fatherhood and creating a community for stay-at-home dads. I also love history, so one of the other things I got to do while I was staying home and my wife would take care of the kids so I could go do this was be a Union Civil War reenactor. So get to dress up in a whole outfit and go out there and shoot Confederates. Lots of fun. In 2020, I began to work on my degree in public history, master's degree in public history. As my kids are getting older, it's time for me to start figuring out what I'm going to do with my life now, and that is what led me to this role. So Preservation Partners, we champion the sense of place for Batavia, Geneva, and St. Charles. Our mission is to offer heritage education and promote the preservation of the Fox Valley's rich architectural and historical resources. We accomplish this through tours and education experiences at five historic properties and by serving as a resource for preserving historic architecture. First, going to show you this photograph, I'm sure you've seen some of these, Somway Studio, right here in Batavia, puts these together. It's really a cool thing that they do, where you can, they're juxtaposing a picture from the past in Batavia with a current picture. And what you can see on this, this is East Wilson Street, obviously, that some things have changed, but it still looks familiar, right? It still looks like Batavia. And while there have been some changes, the character and the uniqueness that's found only in Batavia is visible in both sides of the picture. And I suspect when you're looking at this picture, you're recalling of a time maybe when you walked down the street during the time when that historic picture was taken or sometime near it. If you feel any emotions about that memory, you might think that's nostalgia, but really what you're feeling is a concept called sense of place. Now, sense of place gives us connection, comfort, and commonality, which are elements linked to quality of life. So communities with a strong sense of place like Batavia are where people want to live, work, and visit, and communities with a sense of place are places that grow. And history is what creates that authentic place, that sense of place, because that's how we connect to our past, is how we can find our way to the future. And recognizing this, this council in 2014 in their comprehensive plan highlighted that, quote, "The historic character of much of the community is integral to its image." Now, if Batavia residents and visitors don't know the history, they will not feel any kind of emotional connection here. So education is a critical component, because if you understand something, you appreciate its value. And that's what we do. So one of the things we do is we create education experiences at five historic places in the Fox Valley. So on St. Charles, we engage visitors at the Durant House there on the left from 1843, and on the right, the Shoal School that was built in 1872. In Geneva, we lead tours at the Fabian Villa, which is right there in the center, and which was built by Frank Lloyd Wright in 1907, and then the Fabian Japanese Garden there on the bottom left that was installed around 1910 and restored in the 1980s. Our offices are in a house right there on the river in St. Charles. The Beef House was built in 1850. Beyond our museum doors, we also work on educational programming. We partner with the Batavia Depot Museum in Kane County Forest. We serve as a voice for the community on preserving Batavia's history. We offer education on maintaining historic property, and we are a resource on local ordinances, tax benefits, and adaptive reuse ideas. And one that is actually happening right here in Batavia, it's kind of cool, it's a 10 Somway. Originally, as I understand, it was a theater, and most recently was an office space that's being turned into the Sturdy Shelter Brewing, which I met with a gentleman last week. I'm really looking forward to having one of his beers in a couple of months when they're open. Now, our efforts championing the sense of place for Batavia are reinforced when the built environment is preserved as well as possible. So investing in this historic preservation has the added benefit of driving economic growth. So according to research by University of Pennsylvania economist Donovan Ripkema, property values of buildings in and adjacent to historic districts are higher than those that are not. Visitors tend to travel further, stay longer, and spend more in historic districts. Preserving historic buildings creates jobs, it saves the city money by utilizing existing infrastructure, and it saves the environment. The saying goes that the greenest building you can ever build is the one that's already built, repurposed. So just to kind of give you a summary of how this kind of works with history and preservation. Education on local history and preservation creates that sense of place that people want to live, work, and visit, and that is what drives revenue to the city. So my goal for you is to have the information that you guys need to maintain Batavia's unique character and sense of place so that it can generate economic growth. Sometimes there are difficult choices, and we can help. That's what our job is, to regularly bring you information that you will need during those times when you're having difficult choices about whether to keep a building or not, or add something new to the historic fabric of Batavia. I can facilitate short conversations on future council meetings if the council is interested, or we can meet one-on-one just to talk about various different things like local history, getting more of that information that's out there. I can give you information about economic benefits of historic preservation, there's a lot more detail than what I've already discussed. Talk about several state and federal tax credits that are available for projects that are repurposing historic buildings, and talk to you guys about creative adaptive reuses such as this building that we're in right now. But best of all, everything that we do is completely free. We have membership, and then we operate museums, and what we do is free service for you to help you guys with whatever we can to help maintain a nice, a good sense of place here in Batavia. So if you have any questions, I'd love to hear them, answer them right now. There's my contact information. And if I may, pass these out. Just some more information about our organization and my business card, so any questions I can answer for you.
Any questions? Why would, you know, I have co-authored the history book on Batavia on two previous occasions, so I'd be more than happy to have you come down someday and take you to luncheon, we can just talk about a lot of different history.
I'd love to.
I mean, you don't, you don't realize until you get in here, and I had a congressman I was chitchatting with today, who's now Batavia's newest congressman, and I was telling him about the room that you are standing in here right now. In about the 1967, '68, in this room was manufactured the flexible fuel line that was used in the rocket that landed on the moon in 1969. And when the astronauts came back after the trip up there, they got an author and they collaborated in writing a book called First on the Moon. And it was all supposedly the three authors were the three astronauts. And in the book, on page 77, right there, that the fuel line that went up the rocket was made in Batavia alone. So at the back there, we have a picture of Buzz Aldrin standing on the lunar surface, and I got that given to me from NASA, no less, because what we are in the process, and I have to take the blame for this, it's not done, we're going to make a little exhibit back there that has page 77 from the author's book and whatever, and put the whole story there about how the fuel line was made in this room. And another spinoff of this whole thing was, is that Buzz Aldrin's grandfather, whose last name was Moon, that was his last name, for between the years of 1915 and 1918, he was a minister of the United Methodist Church, two blocks up the street here on Batavia Avenue. And he had a daughter by the name of Marion, and Marion was Buzz Aldrin's mother. So we're about tied into that moon landing, is anybody around? I, one time I had the mayor of Rosemont in here, and I was sharing a lot of this with him, and he says to me, "Well, Jeff, you know what I got in Rosemont, but on a history perspective, you got me beat."
Yeah, there's a lot of rich history here, as I have been learning, and I would love to sit down with you and be a, just be a student for a while.
Give me a call sometime in the next few days, and certainly if any of the members of the council like to come along, let me know after the meeting, and I'll include you in the conversation. But, you know, I think there's a lot of stuff that could be done. It's amazing to me when people come in and we start sharing all this with them, they're just absolutely dumbfounded by the closeness of the American experience that exists specifically right here in the tri-cities.
Yeah.
There's a lot of that, so.
I helped out the St. Charles Museum. They do like a walking tour during the Scarecrow Fest over there, and it was amazing to me that some of the basic things about this area, like, you know, the windmills here and the all the water power that the Fox River did, that almost nobody, you know, had any idea that that's what had happened here before. And so it's kind of amazing to be able to continue to share that. That story is never out there enough, and so we're doing all we can.
Well, you talk about taming the American frontier, the wooden wagons, most of which left Batavia and went out there, were made right next door here at the old Newton Wagon Factory, which later became Batavia Body Company for truck bodies.
Yeah.
And then the windmills were made here, probably more windmills were made in Batavia than any other place in the world between about 1870 and 1920 or thereabouts.
Yeah.
And so, you know, that helped settle the world. So, you know, and then you go forward another 50 years and you get the arrival of Fermilab. And then if, now if you go out to Fermilab and walk in the front door out there, there's a big plaque hanging on the door or on the inside that says that the technology that was used to develop the MRI Medical Research Machine was developed at Fermilab. And if you think of the impacts that that device has had on saving probably millions of lives now and people's health and whatever have you, I mean, we got stuff that, you can't even imagine, some of this stuff that's been done right here, so we have a lot to be proud of.
Oh, I agree. I agree.
Yeah. So please call me in the next few days, and we'll set something up.
Absolutely, I'd love to.
All right. Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions? Thanks.
All right. All right, moving to item number 10, and this sounds very interesting. We're going to have a presentation about an Eagle Scout project to benefit Suicide Prevention Services, and Alderman Saron, you have some background in this.
Well, they reached out to me, and...
Could you do the introduction or whatever?
Sure. Well, I will ask Ethan to come on up with his, is he coming up alone, or is his parents coming up? All right. You know what? We've all seen it in papers, online. Ethan has done a stellar job of getting the word out, and it's something that's resonated with us on the council for the time that I've been here. We've done as much as we can do to help get the word out. So I was intrigued, not only that he's going for his Eagle Scout, which I respect, but to take on this topic, which is heavy but needs to be getting out there. So I appreciate you coming forward, and all I did was call Laura and say, "Can we do this?" So it's all, it's all Ethan. Go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and residents of Batavia, thank you for allowing me to speak with you today. My name is Ethan Tarver, and I'm a Life Scout and Boy Scout Troop 21. This Thursday, I, along with fellow scouts, will be working on my Eagle Scout project. The project is designed to bring awareness to mental health and suicide prevention. With donations from friends and family, I was able to purchase a copy of the documentary The S Word, which talks about the stigma of suicide through the faces of survivors and people who have lost loved ones from suicide. Suicide impacts everyone. In 2020, it was among the top nine leading causes of death for people ages 10 to 64. Suicide was the second-leading cause of death for, every year, nearly 1.2 million people attempt suicide, and nearly 46,000 people die each year from it. There's a death by suicide every 11 minutes. It has impacted our country, state, and community, even within our scouting community. I have been volunteering with SPS since I was little and continue to do so to this day. My fellow scouts and I coordinate the annual luminaria display on Christmas Eve, which lights up the path of Stone Manor in Batavia, home of SPS. I have rented the Batavia Civic Center for this Thursday evening, and will be showing the film free of charge. In addition, I have requested local mental health professionals to provide a panel discussion after the film to share their perspective on suicide and what can be done to fight the stigma and help those around us. My fellow scouts have helped me develop a plan to promote and share this important message. We hope to accommodate for about 60 guests, and so far, 25 have signed up. I welcome your attendance this Thursday night at 7:00, and I encourage you to spread the word in our community. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions? Well, I'd just like to say, I have the opportunity to talk to our police and fire chiefs almost every day, and I get to know probably more than most people in town do, because, you know, anything that we do as a police or fire department that involves any type of health issue, mental, physical, or whatever have you, it's probably protected by the Health Information and Personal Privacy Act, which basically dictates that we dispatch any emergency personnel to help somebody, we can't tell anybody about this, and I don't have any problem with it, it's just the way the law is. So most people in town have no, unless they've been directly hit by it or had no some friend or whatever, most people don't have any awareness that this is going on. And unfortunately, I would tell you as one who makes kind of an outsider observation of this on a day-to-day basis, this whole mental illness thing is maybe the biggest problem we got in Batavia. I mean, it's right there, it's in our face every day. You know, we're running, well, we run six ambulances out of the tri-city ambulance between the three towns, but we have two based here in Batavia. And a lot of the calls our folks go on are mental illness calls, some of which are threats of suicide, or our suicide, or whatever have you. So this is a most worthwhile conversation to have, and I think that it's your people of your age, if we can get to some of those folks and show them where help is and where advice is and how to kind of overcome some of these, you know, we may go a long way toward maybe saving some lives in the days ahead. So I appreciate and commend your efforts as to what you're trying to do here, and it's a most worthwhile project. And I'm sure the city staff will be here, happy to help you in any way we can as far as, you know, anything that you may need. But it's really, folks in your age group have got to get together and have the realization of how really bad this is. So I'm glad that we're not afraid to tackle it and get it out there and do it the right way. So thank you very much on behalf of the city council, myself.
Thank you. Anything else?
Anybody else in the council have anything you want to say?
I'd just say that I really respect you for doing this. I think this is something that, especially in the teenage age group, kids need to know that there's always another way out, that suicide's not the answer. And I pulled out this shirt, this is from an old suicide prevention, and it's, you know, it's your life, fight for it. And I think when somebody your age steps up and gets out there to try to bring this information out, it's even more important than any adult or any other group trying to do that, it's you're trying to help your own. You're trying to help people your age, and I think it's really important that people your age do that. So I really respect you for doing that.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Well, thank you, and, you know, time goes on. If you'd like to come back and give us an update someday and tell us more of what's going on, we'll be happy to entertain you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item 11 is the Main Street presentation. Do we have somebody here from Main Street?
Beth is online with us.
Beth, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Good evening. Tonight, I'm going to report on Restaurant Madness that's going on this week until the 24th, so get out and take advantage of all the deals at our local restaurants. We have a big hop coming up on April 16th, which will be downtown, and that will be from 10 to 1:00. And we're still looking for volunteers, so if anybody's interested, you can go to downtownbatavia.com. Our kiosk project is moving along. We're on track to have installation be completed by the end of April, and that will include the new downtown directory that's being done by Dave Anderson of Anderson Design. The Boardwalk Shop, the new tenants are starting to move in, so they will be open on May 20th, so you'll see lots of action over there. And then our, last year's Boardwalk Shop, we had Pretty Pages and Mojos open on March 12th at 241 West Wilson. Black Angels opened in Geneva underneath the name of Artisan, Urban Artisan, last weekend. Catupam Manor and Farm Dog Flowers will open in April, so mark your calendars and try and visit those shops. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions of Beth?
Where's the last shop at that you talked about? Where's that one going to be at?
Farm Dog Flowers?
Yeah.
Is that what you're asking?
Yeah. Yeah. Is it, where's the other?
That is going to be at 239 West Wilson.
Okay.
Just next to Mojos, where Down Home Customs used to be.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome.
Well, I appreciate the Restaurant Madness. I've had several people tell me that they've already tried a couple and are very, very pleased. And I had somebody else show me the thing you posted online with, I didn't realize we had so many restaurant owners who could advertise themselves almost semi-professionally with some of their lines and whatever have you. So, you're doing a long way, bringing a new face to downtown Batavia. And I think, you know, it's certainly going to be shared with a lot of people in the area. So, hopefully this is going to spin off into something pretty creative for Batavia Main Street.
Yeah. These videos that were done by Ann and both video production have been really amazing.
Right. Any other buddy on the council have any comments to make? Well, thank you for your update. Keep up the great work.
Thank you.
All right. Moving then to item 12, which is Resolution 22-043-R, IBEWS Streets Agreement. Who's got this one?
That's me, Your Honor.
Abby?
So, this is our collective bargaining agreement with our IBW street union. There, this is a three-year agreement that has some changes outlined in Wendy's memo, including some housekeeping items to update titles, a new vacation agreement that allows for a prorated amount of vacation after 30 days of employment. It adds Juneteenth to the list of annual holidays. It has annual rate increases of 3.25% this year, 3% next year, and 2.7% in 2024. And they'll get $300 bonus for becoming a certified pesticide and mosquito applicator. And I believe Wendy is online if you have anything to add or if anyone has any questions.
No, I think you summarized it great. Thank you.
We had quite a conversation about this at the committee meeting last week. So, everybody, I think, is pretty much on board.
Well, if there's no other questions, I will move that we approve Resolution 22-43-R, the IBW Streets Agreement.
Second. Moved by Alderman Beck, Second Alderman Miller for the approval of Resolution 22-043-R, the IBEWS Streets Agreement. Any further discussion? Kirk Holtholth.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Serrone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rizzato.
Aye.
13 yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion's approved. 13 yes, no, no, and one absent. Okay, moving to 13, which is Resolution 22-044-R, FOP Sergeants Agreement. Abby, you have this one too?
I do. This is our collective bargaining agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police for our police sergeants. The updates are outlined in Wendy's memo. This makes a few adjustments to make things more equal between the officers and the sergeants. It adds Juneteenth. They get a week of paid leave for any birth or adoption of children. The rate increases are 3.25% for this year, 3% for next, and 2.7% in 2024. Those are just kind of the highlights. Wendy, do you have anything else you'd like to point out?
No, I think that's good.
Any other questions from council? If not, I will move that we approve Resolution, what's the number on this one, 22-44-R, the FOP Sergeants Agreement.
Second. Moved by Alderman Beck, Second Alderman Miller for the approval of Resolution 22-044-R, the FOP Sergeants Agreement. Any discussion further? Kirk Holtholth.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Serrone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rizzato.
Aye.
13 yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion's approved by a vote of 13 yes, no, no, and one absent for Resolution 22-044-R. Okay, moving to 14, the Administrator's Report. Laura, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Very interesting to be back here standing up at the podium. It's kind of nice to see the room return back to a little bit of normalcy. So, I have a few items that I'd like to share tonight, and then I have a special guest to introduce to you. Tomorrow, March 22nd at 7:00 PM, we'll have our Committee of the Whole Meeting. Today, we had a follow-up meeting with the Active Transportation Alliance of Chicago, who are helping us to update our bike plan into an active transportation plan. They reported that we had 620 separate responses to the survey that we sent out, which in their experience working with other communities, is a tremendous response from the community. I know it doesn't sound like very many people out of more than 26,000, but it is actually quite hard to get people to respond to surveys like that. So, they were very excited about the number of responses and then also with the interactive map, the extent to which people identified problem areas, problem routes, routes that they would like to see, routes that they're most comfortable using, and that this information will be very valuable to us as they assist us in developing recommendations and an action plan that we can really, you know, make improvements to the walkability, bikeability of our city as a whole. I wanted to mention that Wendy Bignarik is also a member of the IPBC Board of Directors. The IPBC is the group who provides the employees with their medical insurance and dental insurance. And we have had a really great experience going from being self-insured to becoming part of this shared risk pool. In fact, we have had very low single-digit increases. And on the HMO side, we've had decreases in our rates, and this is not the typical experience out there with regard to employee medical benefits. So, we've had a really great experience with them, and I think it's a benefit to us that Wendy takes the time to be a member of their Board of Directors as well. Happy to report, we are going through second interviews for our electrical engineer position. So, that's really great too. And then also our HR specialist was conducting engineering intern interviews with Public Works staff last week as well. In community and economic development, the permit for interior finishes for a spec industrial building at 1252 Pearson Drive has been issued. They already have a tenant who has taken over 100% of the space. Their name is Pandion, and it will be a regional distribution facility similar to last mile type delivery service, which will be very, very interesting. But we're really glad to hear that they already have a tenant there. We also are ready to issue permits for the interior finish-out of the Starbucks and Chipotle. And the permit for sturdy shelter brewing, which you've heard about a couple of times tonight, has been issued, and their interior construction is underway. The Plan Commission held their meeting on March 16th and made recommendations on a variance for 416 North Batavia Avenue, electronic message signs in industrial districts, and garage setback requirements. And so, these will now come back to you at a future Committee of the Whole Meeting. The Winding Creek Final Platte and Approval of Certain Easements will be on the COW agenda for tomorrow night. And once those have been approved by City Council, the developer will be able to close on their land purchase and annex the property into the city. In Public Works, formal submittal has already been made to IDOT for a permit to remove the pedestrian crossing at McKee Street and Batavia Avenue. And a letter has been prepared and Mayor has signed requesting that the Secretary of Transportation please expedite both the permit for the removal of the crossing and also consideration of our request for a road diet on Route 31. And we also have transcribed the statements from the individuals who spoke at the City Council meeting on, I believe that was May 5th. And then we have our annual sidewalk repair and road resurfacing programs that are ready for bidding by April. Sidewalk construction is projected for June or July, and resurfacing is scheduled for the August/September timeframe. It's a time when I kind of like to remind residents that on our city website homepage, if you scroll down to the bottom, there's, you can click on something called City Maps, and there's all kinds of very interesting city maps. Want to know what ward you live in? There's a ward map there. If you want to know if your sidewalk is on this year's program to be redone, you can click on a map that will show you all of the sidewalks that are going to be repaired and or constructed and streets that are going to be resurfaced. So, a lot of good information for folks there. Does anybody have any questions for me about any particular projects?
Guess not.
Yes?
Don't I say, "Yes, not"?
Guess not. Okay. Well, then I will introduce my guest, which to many of you needs no introduction. But the city has made an offer which has been accepted for the Communications Manager position. And I think the city would be very fortunate if it could hire a Communications Manager who has an extensive background in communication and also all of the technical aspects of the ways that we communicate with the different communities. We would also be fortunate if that person had extensive knowledge of the city of Batavia, perhaps had been a longtime resident here and extremely involved in many aspects of our community. And I'm happy to say that Lori Bodderman is exactly that individual. And I wanted to take the time to introduce her to you tonight. She will begin employment here with the city Wednesday, March 23rd, and we are extremely glad to introduce her as our new Communication Manager. Lori, would you like to come up and say a few words?
Mayor, Council, thank you very much. I'm very excited about this opportunity to work for the city of Batavia. I've lived here since 2003, and I just love this community so much. My husband, Kevin Bodderman, was on City Council for a brief time. We are very, very involved in the community and excited. And I wanted to just let you know, I'm hoping to be a great resource for you, and hopefully you will be a resource for me. And I hope I can meet with all of you individually at some point, especially you, Mr. Mayor. And if you have any questions for me, I don't have an email yet. I don't have an email address yet. Otherwise, I would send it out to everyone. But I hope that you'll feel free to contact me at any time with any questions. Do you have any questions for me right now?
Anybody have any questions?
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I mean, you're, when Laura told me who she was going to hire, I was in agreement with it because you come with some background. You've been kind of a part of this group and with your husband on the City Council and everything else. You kind of know how it works and what the aches and pains and moments of consternation are. And so, it's somebody you're going to, don't have to teach you a thing. You can hit the ground running.
I don't know about that. I'm sure you could teach me some things. Yes, I'm very, very excited to come to this role. It just works out really well. I think my skills match what the community needs. So, thank you so much.
All right. Look forward to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, going to committee reports. Alderman Wolf, do you have anything on our community development?
Nothing more than what Laura mentioned for tomorrow night for the Winding Creek subdivision. Got, I think, four or five different things for that tomorrow night.
Alderman Beck, you have anything on our Government Services?
Tomorrow, we'll be discussing an intergovernmental agreement with Batavia Township and Countryside Fire Protection District.
Okay. Alderman Serrone, you have anything on our Public Utilities?
Nothing to report, Your Honor.
Okay. Alderman Rizzato, you have anything on our City Services?
Yes, we have a couple items. We have Resolution 2237R, which is for engineering services for Prairie and Wilson Street intersection improvements, Resolution 2242 to purchase a drone, and Resolution 22046, acceptance of a public sidewalk.
Okay. It's a little agenda.
Yes.
I'll be anxious to see if your drone gets any conversation.
Yes, I'm sure it will.
All right. Anybody on the council have any other things you'd like to bring up on our other business? Alderman Miller?
The fourth session for the Batavia Public Schools Long-Term Plan is coming up this Thursday, March 24th, from 6:30 to 8:30 at Rotolo Middle School. The previous three sessions have all culminated to this one, which they have titled Developing the Recommendations. So, as a parent with kids starting off in the school district here, it's going to be important that the community is engaged and is heard and gives their opinions, and also that the school district and also the city continue to work together and form a long-term plan together.
So, would you like to invite any members of the council or the community who would like to come to the meeting?
Anybody. As many people as you can, you can come. Please come because all opinions, all age groups, all backgrounds will be vital to the success of the school district.
Okay. All right. Anybody else on the council?
Leah, wait. Leah has her hand up.
Oh, Leah?
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to mention that I did reach out to Deputy Chief Blowers about concerns I have about excessive speeding around the high school before and after the school lets out. I live in that area, and it is very concerning for the residents and for the pedestrians, even the high schoolers who are walking home at the end of the school day. And there are not sidewalks everywhere around the high school. I know on Roberts Lane, a good portion of Roberts Lane, there are not sidewalks. So, we have students walking in the road, then with excessive speed in vehicles also on those same roads at the exact same time. So, just shared my concern with Deputy Chief Blowers today. He very quickly responded, which I so appreciate that after the day I know that he had with the other incidences that have gone on today in Batavia, but that they're going to increase patrol in that area. But just wanted to share that, especially after the many accidents that happened today in Batavia, that this is definitely something that we need to continue being concerned about for the safety of our students, the safety of our residents.
Okay. Anybody else on the council, anything else they wish to bring up?
Laura, on that thread, are we doing another Slow Down sign thing this year?
Yeah. As a matter of fact, Lori and I have discussed whether we should stick with the same campaign or maybe look to refresh it and update it in some way. So, that is definitely on our radar for this year.
Slow down and put your phone down.
Yeah, there you go.
Good. Because I think that, especially as it gets nicer out, I think that that's a good, obvious, hate to use the pun, sign, but it's what needs to be out there.
Yes.
All right. If nobody else wants to talk, I just have something here. I will tell you that the $64 question from the citizens who called the mayor's office in the last couple of weeks is, you know, they've heard about all this new maps that's been written about stuff, and who's running for what and who isn't running for what and whatever have you. And so, there was a lot of confusion as to who is our congressman now? And I said, well, whoever it was still is because the election hasn't been held and won't be held till November. So, whoever the person is that had the office, and I think most of us know, in a lot of Batavia, the congressman was Underwood, and there was a couple others that were briefly in and out of the picture here. So, with the new map that's been drawn, everybody's, well, who's going to be my congressman? How's this all going to work? So, that was a very interesting question. So, trying to get a map that was really finished off and had the boundaries and showed you what was what was not any easy thing to do. I find this map I have in my hand. I started with a phone call to former Mayor Pro Tem Alderman Dave Brown, who's now on the county board, who in the county is the ones who are preparing the maps. And I asked him if he could use his influence to get me some maps about who are the representatives and the congressmen and everybody else for the district. So, he went to work, and he went to know less than the Kane County Board Chairman, Corinne Pierog, and asked her if she could get the city of Batavia some maps. So, last Friday, County Board Member Brown showed up at my office with a whole bunch of maps. So, it's too much to talk about them all at one meeting, but I wanted to get this one question answered for people because I think I was kind of surprised, like I think many people are, who is going to, who is going to be the congressman for Batavia after the next election? Well, as you know, we had, every 10 years, you have to reapportion in all the elected districts. And so, they went to work on this. And in Illinois, because we've had a population drop, Illinois lost one full congressional district in the coming next term of Congress. So, they had to eliminate one congressman. And interestingly, Congressman Kinzinger from Shanahan was the one that's Republican that got into the big debate in Congress about Trump and everything else. So, he made the decision, he wasn't going to run again. So, they just thought, well, this is an easy way to finish this off. We'll just take Trump or Kinzinger's district, and we'll redistribute that so that we're down a district, and we change everybody's numbers around. So, they had to change most of the congressmen in Northern Illinois around. And what I have here, and I'm going to leave this down here in the room, so if anybody's watching on TV and wants to see this, basically, what's happened is Batavia has been... Basically, what's happened is Batavia has become a member of the eleventh congressional district. And it takes in almost all the entire city of Batavia. Interestingly, with the exception of one very small area in our town, and that's up on the east side at Route twenty-five and Washington Avenue, where there's the Shell gas station that's up there. And there's, I think, ten houses on Washington Avenue and fifteen houses maybe behind it on Orion Road. They have been put into the...
Mayor Eighth.
What?
The Eighth.
The Eighth Congressional District, which is represented... I always have a trouble with this name.
Rajah.
Rajah.
Krishnamurti.
Krishnamurti. And he's from the Schaumburg area, and he is the new north end of Batavia congressman. His district is going to be. He has to get elected to it to be it. But he's in that, he's a Democrat, he's from the Schaumburg area. The mayor of Schaumburg, who is a friend of mine, speaks very highly of him. His staff called here last week, and I was able to engage them in conversation today about different stuff. They're very interested, kind of know more about Batavia and whatever have you. But interestingly, Congressman Underwood has left the region. She's no longer, her district is no longer in here around us or anything else. She is now down in a lot of what was Kissinger's district, I believe. And so as a result of that, they've reconfigured things, and they brought out of DuPage County our former congressman, Bill Foster. And he is now going to be, his seat is congressional seat eleven, and that's the one that includes the entire rest of the city of Batavia besides this small area that Rajah's got up on the northeast side. And so this is hard, a lot of people are having a hard time understanding this. Now, I stress that these folks aren't elected yet, but these are the people whose district you're going to be voting in and voting on. It gets more complicated, and I don't know if I want to do this at a council meeting or what, but when you get into the state representative and state senator districts, that is a real, real change of districts. And knowing who drew the map and who some of the people impacted were, I'm just sitting here scratching my head how some of this map got drawn. But it did, and so I can suggest that that's going to be a very challenging arena in this area of who's going to be the state representatives and the state senators. And I got that map, and I'll bring it to another meeting, and we'll talk about that. But I just think you guys on the City Council here should know what's really going on with these maps because this is a change unlike I've ever seen in Batavia or the area before. And, you know, one of the things that, you know, is laying around out here is is that between two thousand and ten and two thousand and twenty, the US Census Bureau, they haven't given us the final number yet.
They have.
And it's what, ninety-four people between? They're trying to tell me, I'm going to be the only one that's arguing this for the moment. They're trying to tell me that between two thousand and ten and two thousand and twenty, Batavia grew ninety-four people for ten years. Now, that's after, if you go out to Tanglewood, out on Deer Path Road in the seventh ward out there, they built one, the last section five of their subdivision, which I think was fifty-six or fifty-seven houses. Now, that's just in that one area. Then over on Kirk Road at Wind Energy Pass, we have the new townhouse development that's on over there. And as near as the staff can think, figure for me, they think we very well could have issued up to over a hundred building permits in the last ten years before we got to this time for that area out there. So, I mean, we could be having like a hundred and fifty-five units that we know of that were built in Batavia in the last ten years, and they're telling me we only grew ninety-four people? So I'm going to be down here, when you guys get ready to have the agenda for the budget hearings, I'm going to be suggesting that the Census Bureau tells us that they will allow for special censuses to be accepted in the last quarter of 2023. So next year's budget, I'm going to be here suggesting that we go for a special census between that and everything else that's now being built and what we're going to be approving tomorrow night out there on McKee Street there, behind Wilkett Lane and that area where those cell towers, that's another hundred and sixty-three single-family houses by itself. By the end of 2023, we could, I think we'll make a lot of money by having a special census because right now, we're losing money that I, you know, and somehow or another, a whole bunch of people didn't get counted, and I don't know how that happened. But there's just some, something going on here that I've never dealt with before, and I'm not alone. Let me just tell you that most of the other mayors in the area have the same complaints and are raising the same issues that I'm talking about. So if you get a chance, I'm going to leave this map over on the table there, and if anybody'd like to go over and study it in greater detail. But it's, this one's pretty detailed about Batavia, and it kind of shows you where, what streets are. But basically, Bill Foster, if he's running for reelection, if he stays in office and gets reelected, he was from Batavia when he first got elected, and he was, he's a former Fermi guy. And he, his district grew, and they moved him more over into Naperville in southern Will County, and he was the congressman for there, but now he got kicked back out here now that they had to find space to move people around since they had to do away with the one district. So that's kind of all the moving parts in this thing, but it's a very complicated thing, and a lot of people... One last comment I'd like to make is, is that, as you know, we've always been very open about the utilization of this room. And so the last three or four major general elections, we've allowed this room to become the citywide polling place for early voting in Batavia. And so the last election, which was the presidential election of two years ago, we had unbelievable lines of people going out the door, going halfway down Island Avenue, wanting to come in here and vote early for the presidential election. Now, the gals that were running this thing, or I went and got them drinks or pop or water and whatever, so we became kind of friends. So they were sharing observations with me, and they noted that it appeared to them that there was a lot of people that were coming in here for the presidential election, and there was, I don't know, a hundred or some other names on the ballots for all these congressmen and state representatives and countywide offices. And they said that it appeared to them that a lot of people came for one reason and one reason only. They either wanted to vote for Donald Trump or Joe Biden, and they didn't care about anybody else on the ballot. And many of them would go in and just click the one space and turn around and walk out and leave. Or many of them would go and vote straight Republican or straight Democrat, and then they'd leave. But very few people stood there and went through the ballot and picked out candidate by candidate. They went just to get the thing over with. And so, you know, I think that's kind of the way it works now in some degree, that people go for the top name on the ballot, and everybody else, whether they love you or hate you, you just, you may or may not get their vote, but most of them aren't voting for that. And so this just kind of complicates the issue, I think, even further. And I went to a couple senior meetings recently, and this was the big question I got asked. Jeff, who's our congressman? Who's running? Where's these district boundaries at and everything else? Well, here's the map, and so it's an interesting process. So if any of your constituents say, "Gee, I'd like to know more about where it's at in my area," invite them to come down here. We'll have the map right here, and they can take a look at it and see what's going on because it's, especially as I say, when you get into the state representative stuff and state senator, man, that's all over the place. Now, the interesting thing, I would just, I say this seriously, but almost joke. You know, when we, under the nineteen sixty-four US Supreme Court ruling, there's this thing called "One Man, One Vote." And they said that in that edict, that every representative district, like in the city of Batavia, we have seven wards. There should be an equal number of people living in each one of those seven wards, which I think makes some sense, and that's probably pretty good. So that meant that, and some of you have done this with me, we've had to sit down on occasion in past years when we got the census, and we've had to move some boundaries around. I think you got moved around quite a bit there at one of those elections.
I got moved, actually, Dave got moved out of my neighborhood.
Right.
When he ran for county board.
Right. So, I mean, there's just some strange things happen in that regard. But anyway, I guess what I'm thinking is now we've got this new census that says we grew ninety-four people. Well, they give you some leeway about how many people have to be in each ward, and it has to be the twenty or thirty, you've got to be within a few. But with our number being so low, I don't know if we need to reapportion the wards or not. Right now, I would tell you, they probably could just stay the way they are, and nobody's going to raise any question because it's all pretty, pretty equal for what's going on. But just a lot of new things to think about. I don't mean to add any more to your piles of stuff you have to worry about, but this is one that'll be coming up in our faces as we get nearer to the elections and people start looking at who's going to vote, where they're going to vote. I'm sure the county's going to be knocking on the door here, if they haven't already, asking for this room to be the special early polling place, and I think we should give it to them. I mean, it's really, we're representing the people, and it's their building, and they should be able to come in there and use it to vote, so I, you don't argue that. But I mean, it's just, I think it's going to be a very interesting time in the next few months as all this unveils itself, and everybody tries to identify who they are and what party they're with and whatever. So that's the end of my report for the night. So as long as I got both the police and fire chiefs sitting here, just again, as I said during the prayer, these departments did wonderful work today. Maybe that's not the word, but they really rose to the occasion. And ironically, in the case of the police department, we had a police officer retire today after twenty-five years, and this was his last shift. And we had a little reception for him at noon that Laura and I went to, and we presented him with the city plaque. And Tom Doggett was his name. Some of you may know him. And this was his very last shift, and man, he went out. Was he still here when all that started breaking loose?
No, Mayor, he left.
Oh, he left? Boy, he just got out the door in a few minutes, didn't he? So, I mean, but they really did rise to the occasion. And when you saw Channel Seven's helicopter hanging over the east side of town, and then you get here, and WGN's down here, and so I'm sure they'll be on the nine o'clock news here in a few minutes. So a lot going on. So that's the end of the mayor's report. Somebody want to make a motion for adjournment?
I move we adjourn. Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Rosado. Kirk, take a voice vote.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.